You don't need to cough really loud at all, just take off. Good, alright.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Guyman City Council. At this time, I'd like to bring up Father John Paul Lewis from St. Peter, the Apostle Catholic Church, to invocation.
Father, we give you thanks for your faith and all kinds of blessings. We pray that these years in our city have blessed us with things that we can't tell people we're still related to the time, especially where there's some cases that we're not involved. This year, we just have to take that with us. If all of us do, we're basically going to be blessed to seek the common good. We give you everything we can to help us in this.
Uh, Mr. Swager, who is in part of the meetings?
I'd like to lay this clear to God, and then I say it's in my faith. I'm a believer in the public, for what is said, one nation under God, and the devil is with the very deep injustice of all.
Call this meeting to order. Item two, attendance roll call.
Livinggood?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Alvedres?
Here.
Swager?
Here.
Egger?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Paddy?
Here.
Mr. Denham?
Present.
Item three, public comments and announcements.
But nobody's gonna call you.
Give it ten seconds. Okay, looks like we don't have any callers. We'll give it a few more seconds.
Yeah, there, there was, um, I saw the city post, and it said that our meeting was at five, so there might be some confusion there.
Yeah.
Tell us a story while you're saying.
One from today, or just the last day?
Okay, uh, if we don't have any callers. Item four, approval of the consent agenda.
I'd like to request that we, I'd like to make motion that we remove item 4.8 from the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion in a second.
Egger?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Uh, item four, approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion in a second.
Who's second?
Alvedres.
Egger?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Item 4.8, uh, discussion and possible action on appointing Chuck Crone to fill a vacancy left by Mike Richardson on the cemetery board with the term ending in 2025.
Make a motion on the table, tell the COVID, do something.
Second. Have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Swager?
May.
Peterson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Item five, discussion and possible action on approval of Panhandle Area Sheltered Workshop mowing agreement.
Yes, um, this agreement's just an, a, uh, annual agreement that we have with the Panhandle Area Sheltered Workshop, uh, to do mowing around the, around, uh, Guyman. I think there are about fourteen different properties that are, uh, that they mow at different rates, and, um, it is a budgeted, uh, purchase, and I would recommend the, uh, passage of this, of this contract at this time.
I make a motion that we approve the Panhandle Area Sheltered Workshop mowing agreement.
Second. Have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Egger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Item six, discussion and possible action to approve the professional services agreement with municipal finance services.
I had a couple questions on this. It looks like we're hiring a bond company to come in and write a bond for us for a fee of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars at a minimum, with a twenty-five-hundred-dollar a year, uh, additional maintenance fee on that to sell the muni bonds. My question is, as the utility authority, and David, this might be towards you, can we not do a loan with the local banks partnering together at a much cheaper rate than the cost of writing the bond? Cause I seen it was one percent. I realize we'd have to do that on a annual term, but I didn't know if that might be a cheaper option, or if this is the best option. All financial advisors are valuable. No, I, I was just, I was just in comp, but that makes sense.
Any other discussion?
I make a motion that we approve the professional services agreement with municipal finance services, item six. I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Uh, Mr. Egger.
Mr. Egger.
Way down, here.
Who made the motion?
Mr. Alvedres.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's okay. Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Egger?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Item seven, discussion and possible action on approval of right-of-way public utility and encroachment agreement between the City of Guyman and the Department of Transportation.
Uh, yes, what this is, is it's an agreement between us and the Department of Transportation, uh, to help with, uh, um, construction of this two-point-four-seven miles between Fifth and Parliament Street, um, along, along, uh, US 54. The, where we would come in is, we would, uh, we would be required to move any of our utilities that are in, would be encroaching upon the new right-of-way, which, uh, for everything that I've seen so far, there are none. Uh, we will help with the, uh, direction of traffic to make sure that, um, there's a lane open for, um, for, uh, the highway traffic to get through, um, and other than that, there's no anticipated costs at this time. If there do, if there does happen to be some relocation lines in the future, we would take care of those with budgeted maintenance funds.
Joe Don, do we have a sewer main that runs through there right in front of, it used to be Beers International, I think it's a machine shop now?
For the plans that I've seen, not in the, uh, not in what's gonna be the easement.
Okay. I know it's right there in Tom Stevens' corner, we have one. I know that's the city's for sure.
For, for the plans that they provided, the architectural drawings that they provided us, uh, there's not, there's nothing, there's no value utilities in, that'll be in the future easement that would need to be moved.
Great.
Make a motion, we approve, uh, agenda number seven, the right-of-way agreement between the city and the Department of Transportation.
Second. Have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Item eight, discussion and possible action on approval, uh, resolution number 20-03, a resolution approving the right-of-way public utility and encroachment agreement with the Department of Transportation of the state of Oklahoma.
And this is just a can, uh, companion item to the item we just passed.
Make a motion that we approve resolution number 20-03, resolution approving the right-of-way public utility encroachment agreement with the Department of Transportation of the state of Oklahoma, item eight.
I'll second. Have a motion in a second.
Egger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Item nine, discussion and possible action to enact a temporary COVID-19 emergency paid sick leave policy.
Our health insurance, uh, well, not our health insurance, our liability insurance carrier, O-MAG, has, in light of the COVID-19 situation, has recommended that we pass a temporary emergency paid lea, paid sick leave, uh, policy. Uh, this policy would be in effect from, uh, basically April 2nd until December 31st of this year. Um, it keeps us in compliance, by passing this policy, it keeps us in compliance with the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act that was, uh, created on March 25th. It, it outlines how we will, um, pay sick leave for individuals that are going to, that would end up claiming sick leave because of COVID-19. Uh, it would only affect the employees that are affected by COVID-19. Uh, any other sickness would be, would just be part of our PTO.
And that would have to be a confirmed case of COVID-19?
Yes. They would, they would initially go off work, because it takes a while, a while to get that, uh, confirmation back, right now, at least.
Yeah.
Takes two or three days at a minimum, and of course, if we, if they come down with a sickness, have a hundred, a hundred point one fever, or coughing, or anything like that, we're gonna automatically send them home, uh, tell them to get tested. Once that test comes back positive, this would kick in.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the action to enact a temporary COVID-19 emergency paid sick leave policy. Second. Have a motion in a second.
Peterson?
Aye.
Egger?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Item 10, discussion and possible action to enact a temporary COVID-19 family and medical leave expansion policy.
Again, this is being recommended by O-MAG, uh, to keep us in compliance with the cha, with the, uh, emergency FMLA changes and the US Department of Labor wage in our, our division, um, paid leave policies. Um, the, uh, the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act and the Emergency Family Medical Leave Expansion Act were both part of the Families First Coronavirus Act. It will be in, in effect for the same timeframe, April 2nd to December 31st. Um, it allows for, um, it expands the use of FMLA for, um, COVID-19 cases, and it outlines how you pay for whether the employee is sick, or whether they are, whether they are having to take off because of a family member that is sick, and they are, they are required to care for them. It, it gives us some leeway on, um, how we would bring that person back to work, um, from the, from the federal, from the FMLA, uh, standards, um, and it keeps us in compliance with, uh, Families First Coronavirus Act.
Any other discussion?
Make a motion, we approve, agenda item number 10, uh, possible action to enact a temporary COVID-19 family and medical leave expansion policy.
Second. Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Egger?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Item 11, discussion and possible action on electing three nominees for the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group Board of Trustees.
Well, um, at the last council meeting, we did nominate a, uh, one, one of our council members to be on the, uh, trustee election ballot. Um, this, these three terms will start on, uh, July 1st of 2020. There are thirteen different individuals that have, are seeking, uh, election at this time. There's no financial impact for the City of Guyman. All expenses for this would be paid by O-MAG. Uh, the people that are listed on the ballot are the two incumbents, Pam Pope and Daniel Tarkington. Uh, new people that are running for this position would be Justin Battles, his assistant city manager of Mustang, uh, John Dean, city manager of Durant, Ernest Dowdell, council member for the city of Clinton, Lindsey Gregg, count, uh, city clerk for the city of El Reno, Gerald Harry, town administrator for the town of Manford, Tim Lyon, city manager of Midwest City, Russ Nietchem, financial officer for the city of Perry, Steven Neal, city manager of the city of Lindsay, of course, Kim Peterson, vice, vice mayor of the city of Guyman, Mark Winery, city manager of Drumrock, Scott Watt, mayor of the city of Poto. Of course, I would recommend that we would cast one ballot for, uh, Mr. Kim Peterson, city of Guyman. The other two ballots, um, I know several of these individuals, uh, they are all qualified, uh, to, and to serve on these committees. I know the two incumbents are passionate about what they do and looking after the city's best interests, and I believe all of them would do the same. Um, the ballots, um, the ballot for the two remaining nominees would be, uh, your preference. I don't really think you can go wrong on any of them.
Does anybody know Mark Winery? He was the one I was reading about. He was an Air Force Colonel.
I have not met Mark.
I know Stoddy White of Poto would be a good fit, and then, uh, Tarkington, mayor of Chakota, would be another good fit, in my opinion.
Anybody knows Tim Lyon?
Tim Lyon, yes, I know Tim Lyon, city of, uh, Midwest City, he would be a very capable man. He's had a long tenure with Midwest City.
So it sounds like maybe Kim and Daniel.
I mean, and personally, I know Justin Battles, he would be fine. Uh, Lindsey Gregg, uh, I've known her for quite some time, she would be fine. Mr., Mr. Lyon, he would be great. Russ Nietchem would also serve to, um, give some diversity to the board. Um, some of the others I just have not, I just not had the opportunity to meet yet.
Did you say that you like Tarkington?
Yeah.
Tarkington, yes. They, both the incumbents, Pam Pope, I've known her for twenty-six years, would be a very, is very competent, uh, served in several different cities, or, uh, a few different cities that I'm aware of. She's currently in city manager of Collinsville, uh, and Daniel Tarkington also would be a, is very capable, and would not have a problem recommending either one of those either.
Daniel was in the, the OML's Leadership Academy, and the year he was in it, he came to Guyman, and he always, always talks very highly of you, young of you. But they're all, they're all.
Just Tarkton, our second nominee.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, then we got one to go.
Could you mention Matt?
I was just, I thought the Air Force Colonel was interesting, as I read his bio, Mark Winery? I, I, I just read the bio, so I don't have any. Any dog in a fight. I think Kim or Sean or Joe Don's recommendation is what I probably would.
I mean, Pam would, Pam would be, be great, and she's, she's been on the board for several years, um, just, you know, just, uh, elected city manager of the year in 2017, um. She'd be, she'd be good. She, she'd be, be good, and she would, you know, provide the consistency I think that board needs.
All right, so we nominate Pam for our third. Pam, Daniel, and Mr. Peterson, second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Alvedres.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Egger?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Item 12, any new business? Okay. Item 13, will stand adjourned as the Guyman City Council. Uh, we will reconvene, uh, special meeting of the Guyman Utilities Authority, call this meeting to order. Item two, approve the minutes of the special meeting of March 10th, 2020.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes, special meeting, March 10, 2020, item two.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Item three, consider and take action with respect to resolution number 20-01, a resolution of the Guyman Utilities Authority authorizing the execution of professional services agreements pertaining to, among other things, the financing of a certain soccer facilities benefiting the city of Guyman, Oklahoma, authorizing the authority's financial advisor to distribute information packages to prospective financial institutions in connection with the referenced financing and containing other provisions relating thereto. Will this allow the two banks that had previously approached us about funding the soccer complex to continue to go together?
They, I have talked to the bond, the bond attorney and the financial advisor both. They are, uh, they have assured me that the local banks will be contacted. Uh, we will get a list of when we are asked to, uh, when we, when we go to vote on the pack, the, who gets the award, there, there will be a list of all the banks and what their responses are.
But they can combine, the two banks can go together? Yeah. Any other discussion?
I make a motion that we approve resolution 20-01, a resolution to the Guyman Utilities Authority authorizing the execution of professional services agreements pertaining to, among other things, the financial of certain soccer facilities benefiting the city of Guyman, Oklahoma, authorizing the authority's financial advisor to distribute information packages to prospective financial institutions in connection with the referenced financing and containing other provisions relating to thereto.
Second. Have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Egger?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Item four, reports from city manager and council members. If I could, I'd like to go first, if that's okay with you guys.
Um, one, I just wanna say thank you to all city staff who, during this time of, uh, little bit of confusion and trying times for everyone, um, we've continued to press on and do a wonderful job, not only getting the essential things done, but the people behind the scenes, uh, you know, making sure we have the resources for meetings and making sure things are flowing smoothly. The other couple thank yous to the council members, um, for you guys' support, uh, for everything that's gone on, and you guys, um, being vital and, and that, and that we've continued to, uh, press on during this hard time. The other one is, uh, to Joe Don, our city manager. This probably wasn't what we all expected for you to start out, um, but I would tell you that you've handled this better than probably anyone. Um, it's, it's an unknown time for a lot of people, and you've, uh, I think you've been very wise, and I think you've done a very good job leading this city. Um, the other, the other two would be to our first responders, um, our police department, um, and then our doctors in the local community. Um, I think we've handled this well. Um, I don't know where we're truly at with this yet. Hopefully, it's near done, maybe not. Um, I just wanna say thank you to you guys, and, uh, continue to press on, and, uh, we will continue to work together and make this the best possible situation for everyone. That's all I have.
Dito.
I agree with you totally, and I think both of you and Joe Don have done an excellent job, and, uh, my comment would be, you know, it's a trying time, but everybody needs to be positive, everybody needs to learn to smile, and laugh, and tell a joke, and, and we're gonna get through this, you know?
We are all in this together. That's been, that's been my motto.
Yep. Joe Don, I don't know if you have anything?
Yes, I do have, I do have a few things I'd like to report on. Um, first of all, thank you for the vote of confidence, this is a, uh, I've been in municipal government for twenty-six years now, never in my life would I have thought we would be where we're at today. Uh, this is, this is new for anybody that sits in my chair, for sure. Uh, uncharted waters, so to speak. Um, with that, what I would like to offer up is that I do have some, uh, concerns that revolve around the COVID-19, um, situation that we're in, uh, in that, um, I am very concerned about our, about the city finances and budgets. Um, I believe that the city, the city sales tax, uh, revenues will take a hit in the, um, in the future months. I think we will see a brief bump up when our sales tax for March comes in, but I believe we will see a prolonged dip after that because of the economy. Um, we're gonna, we've got restaurants that are, uh, having to close, we've got hotels that are having, that are not seeing tourism, uh, and not seeing travelers, uh, we have shops that are closed. Um, not only is this gonna be a strain on those entities, which it certainly will be, then, uh, it will be a strain on the city's, on a city's budget. Uh, with that in mind, I have instructed staff during our last, uh, staff meeting that any purchase over five thousand dollars will need to, uh, be approved by me first. We're going to place a hiring freeze on all full-time positions which are currently open. Uh, we will only be hiring for part-time positions, and they will only, they will have to be essential positions. Uh, the main positions that I am considering right now would be for the mowing crews. Um, if memory serves me correctly, all of our employees are back to work now. We have had several that were off because of the COVID-19 scares, but every, everything is, everybody's back to work at this time, if I, if I remember correctly. Um, at the, I've talked to the mayor a little bit, and, um, do anticipate us to have a special meeting in, in April, that, uh, we will have a couple of different things we'll need to address. One of them, I've asked him if we could look at appointing a, uh, COVID-19 Business Task Force. Force that would help, that would be made up, but my recommendation for the makeup of that task force would be one city council member, and three or four members from the business community, to include one person from a, from a local financial institution. Staff members would be the Economic Community Development Specialist, Sheila Martin, and myself. The purpose of this task force would be to recommend to the city council ways that the city can help, can step in, and see what we can do to help the local businesses that are negatively affected by the COVID-19 virus, the ones that have had to close. There'll be some that'll need help, there will be some that won't need as much help, but we can provide guidance in a lot of different ways, and I think a task force would be a good way to flush out all the details that I think we need to flush out before we make a recommendation to the city council. Some of our, some of the things that are just kind of ongoing, our sales tax, for, for the timeframe through April, because we have collected our April sales tax, is up just slightly, about 1.5% from 2019. We're a little bit more than that, 2.8% down from what we anticipated during the budget process. Our sales tax, our use tax rather, is tracking along pretty close to that. It's 2.7% higher than 2019, and just about 0.8% below what was anticipated at the budget process, at the budget, through the budget process. Our utility collections through March of 2020 is down about 5% from last year. Have not had a big time, have not had the opportunity for any of these to really delve in to see what is up with the finances and what's driving that, if there are things that were going on last year that's not going on this year, but obviously, we're gonna see some effects in all of these areas in the future months. Right now, financially, across all of our funds, we've collected about $6.7 million in revenue, and we've expended about 5.2. This still gives us a positive number, fund balance increase, but it's, it's a, it's slightly smaller than what we saw last year, which is a little bit concerning to me. We're gonna have to wa, again, just gives us more of a reason to watch our, watch our revenues and our expenditures, and make sure that what we're buying now is truly essential. As far as some of the projects that we've got going on, we've talked a little bit about the Nash Soccer Complex. I'll have a meeting later on this week with Multicon and Kim Lee Horn to discuss how this project starts to move forward. The airport projects we've got going on, we are working on the preliminary engineering for a runway and parallel taxiway. This will be completed with FAA funds. We'll have a, a match of about 5% that we'll have there. See, there is gonna be about a, the FAA relief bill, which is going through Congress right now, will provide about a $2 trillion stimulus package, with $10 billion of that for airports. It'll be 100% funded, so there'll be no, there'll be no matching funds that the City of Guyman would have to put in on that. We are waiting to see if we become eligible for that funds, for those funds, and if so, we'll be able to move our project items up from, up a year or so that we've got slated. We'd be able to maybe do the, if we can get 100% funding for the runway and the taxiway construction, that would move us up, that would move our timelines up about three years. I have been working, had a conference call today with Diana Pet Foods. They've got some wastewater issues and have been under a DEQ compliance order. I think there's some ways that we're gonna be able to help them out, and as I discussed that with the wastewater treatment operator and, and the public utility supervisor, we will, we'll have a solution ready to bring forward in the, within the next few weeks. Currently, right now, the water, the wastewater treatment facility is handling the load, but when we look at the expansion of the Seaboard Plant, there could be some issues in the future that we've got to address, and how we're gonna handle those, because that would, it would put our treatment plant out of compliance, and we want to keep, we want to keep them in compliance to handle our waste, our wastewater. Mayor and council, that would be the report I'd have for you tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Okay.
I'd like to commend you on that. That's the best financial report I've had since I've been here.
It's true.
One thing, one thing I too would like to ask you is to keep track, you can do some historical data, but it's been mentioned to me by a couple of different people that Pioneer Days, the Bike Rally, and College Rodeo really had no impact on our sales tax. But we looked at those graphs, and I've never really agreed with that, but I've seen the graphs myself and had it sent to me to look through, and according to those graphs, you don't, but this will be a telling sign.
Yeah, yes. Are we continuing to operate the ride as normal?
Yes, it is a, it is a essential operation. We are continuing to operate that. We do, as part of our efforts to try to keep it clean, we do sterilize those vehicles several times a day. We are actually getting our cleaner from a vodka company that has made this, and this, it has, we've found some ingenious, some pretty ingenious ways to make this happen. What we just say on that cleaner, what we've done, is we've looked it up to a little spray gun, paint spray gun, and we can go through and perhaps could have found this throughout the vehicle. It settles on the surfaces and then dries, and once it's dried, it's pretty, what the Health Department has told us, it's pretty well sanitized, and we're ready to go out again, but that's, you know, because of things we've been hard to get a hold of, we've had to look through different ways to provide the safe operations that we do.
Have we been doing our social distances like out at the golf course?
As much as we can, as much as we can. I have, I've heard complaints about people not, people sharing golf carts. We do have a rule that it's only one golf cart per person right now. It has always been a rule that there are no more than five people in a party. They're supposed to be calling in and getting their two times signed, and separate, we're separating those out by 15 to 20 minutes, I think.
Thank you.
Anything else? Nope. Item 5, new business. We'll stand adjourned. Item 6, thank you.
Thank you all.
So, again, we told you all, we've been close to the end of the staff.
No, I don't think anybody's fired over there. Yeah, I mean, when we came up with that, we did police cars. We did the police cars, we did a lot of our shooting duty, the same way, just to try to keep them hidden, so, you know.
Yeah.
The ride is good. It makes the whole point.
Yeah.
We had 35 people watch that ice cream tonight.
Awesome. They held up.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you. I, I understand, I understand. Okay. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a challenging time.